Everybody and um and glad you could make it in this snow. Anyways, that we have way more today. I thought everybody would come today because it's snowing outside. But Chris has done a show for the um twirl images, I guess it's called or whatever. Um so let him take over.
There wasn't a lot of participation, but
No.
Here's a few images.
Thank you, Chris.
Do bad.
You did together. That looked great. And thank everybody who did participate. There were some great images there and uh cool, cool transitions. Um I guess we'll carry on. Anybody have any questions about the about the twirl images?
No.
Awesome. Okay, we're gonna go on to the theme if Trevor, I mean if John is back and you're ready to go.
Yep, I'm back.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, just give me a moment. All right. Just need a switch to uh Oh, have I done now?
I'm just gonna, okay.
Let's do this. Okay, and then where am I? Sorry, I've lost a window here. There we go. Oh, and that was the wrong button. Oh, it's wonderful doing things live. All right. Thank. Okay, does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
You can go ahead and leave the probably the info up.
Okay.
Some people like to look at it.
Okay. Oh, and wow, I'll I'll just be a voice instead of turning my camera on. Um so first off, uh just sort of this sounds like a disclaimer, but it's just a reminder that these critiques are meant to be constructive and provide teaching moments for all photographers in the club. So these critiques are not about the people, it's about the images and that the critiques are more opinion than anything. Um they we don't know what was in your head when you took the photo, so we don't know what it looked like through your eyes. So with that, just take take what's said with a grain of salt. If you think there's a good suggestion, use it in the future and kind of ignore the rest. So speaking specifically about the theme, which was still life, um we have a great collection of still life photos tonight from um from everyone. So what's nice about still lives is it provides an opportunity for us to work with the scene, to look at it from different angles, with different arrangements, try different lenses, try different camera settings. And so it really provides a lot of, uh I'd say a lot of learning growth. So let's look at this first one, uh which is called Afternoon Sparkle. So it's been up for a bit, so I'll just dive right in. Um so general comment about this, it reminded us of a reminded us of a medieval coat of arms. Uh one of the things we liked was the great contrast in colors. Um as far as composition, this is a great example of symmetry with those contrasting shades of light and dark. Uh the ripple on the left, that brings the eye to the top of the glass and keeps the eye in the frame. And the sunburst really helps to elevate this photo, we felt. Technically speaking, this demonstrates a lot of technical skill. Uh this is seems to this is obviously composite of the class on top of a background. You can see this by the difference in the share shadows. Uh so you need to watch that when you're doing compositions, they should they should match, be the same. Couple of improvements that could be made. Um some found the dark area in that red to be on the left to be distracting. Um also, if you look around the edge of the glass, especially like around the stem, you can see that it's quite soft. Now, some thought a more defined edge would be better, but others like the way it added an ethereal moodiness to this. So it was unclear what the photographer's intent was there. Um and then one of the questions, yeah, so a couple of questions we had, was the sunburst added to hide that reflection in the glass? It's like a reflection from a window. And then what was the intention of the soft edges? And then how did the photographer do the checkerboard appearance of the glass? Was another question that we had. Again, overall, we thought it was pretty outstanding.
So Denise, are you here? Do you mind answering some of the questions?
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Um the sun sparkle was not added. This was actually um you're right, the the background is a composite or is added afterwards. But the image itself was, this is a one-shot thing. Um I had this glass just standing on a a coffee table. And the the sun was just coming through the the front room window and it it caught the sparkle like that. And the reason that you get the checkerboard pattern there is I was shooting up against um the corner of the wall. So you know, the line that goes all the way down the glass is the actual corner of the the wall. And then on one side, I was getting a lot of um sun and the other side was in shade of the wall. And I I've been thinking about how this ended up checkerboard, and I think it's just because the shape of the glass has actually maybe flipped the um the shadow.
Hmm.
Uh but when I looked at it, this is what I saw. As far as the glass went, so.
Cool. So actually, the at the top right of the glass, that's that's like a a light or a window, right?
The top right of the glass?
The glass. It's like a window, and so that's shining through the red part, and that's why the red shows up red, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And then the top left is is your dark wall that you were talking about, and so the reflection of the the glass shows the darkness there. That's that's cool.
Yeah, yeah, it was actually kind of a fun shot to take and yeah.
Thank you.
Did I get all the questions?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. So we felt this this photo, uh the cameras and newspaper tell a great story of a bygone day. Uh regarding lighting, uh the yellow lighting might be due to a tungsten lighting, or maybe it was due to color grading. Either way, it gives it this nice old-timey feel. Perhaps uh moving the black, the box back a little bit would have allowed more light to hit the brownie camera. Uh regarding composition, nice arrangement of the cameras on the box, that balances the height of the camera with the flash. Uh perhaps the angle of the box, maybe angling that box back to add more depth to the photo could have been done. Uh the camera on the left could benefit from a little more room on the side of the photo. Uh maybe having the whole box in the frame, maybe the photo, but maybe the photographer was trying to balance the top ray of the newspaper with the camera. Technically speaking, the photos on the noisy side, for example, if you look at the top left corner, you can see in the with the background, and so could use some noise reduction. Um some other improvements, the eyes are just in any photo are naturally drawn to text, so having that blurred more. Uh adding, for example, pointing it a little farther back from the cameras themselves to add more separation that would have highlighted the cameras a bit more. The exposure could be improved as there seems to be a loss of detail in the blacks, specifically on the camera on the right. Uh and then one of the questions we had is it's unclear what the actual reflection in the flash is. Part of it looks like the back of a car, but maybe this is reflection of a stove. And we were, we weren't quite sure. So this was by Dana Ali.
Yeah, that'd be mine. Um I'm unclear what the reflection was to. I think it was probably my kitchen. I was working with my front windows and I used the black foam board. I didn't have any boxes to use to create my images with.
You mean behind it you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, behind it.
Behind it.
I had the foam boards, you know, the black foam boards, and then I had them leaning up against my living room window.
Yeah, yeah, that's cool. So you did that backlighting thing is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And um so so what was behind you? Your kitchen?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's probably what's in there.
Yeah.
So the light, um I would just say that the light that's falling on the Polaroid camera is probably daylight, and that's why it's a little bit um whiter on the light than what's falling on the magazine, because because the newspaper would have been right against the black, right? And it probably didn't get any uh natural light on it, right?
Yeah.
That's what caused the, that's why it's that yellow color.
Yeah, I had too much light, so I was trying to make it less light, but the ideal conditions in my apartment wasn't the best.
Yeah. In that case, if you had a piece of white foam core, um then you would put that in, try to get that in front of you so that the light that's coming through the window is reflecting back onto the cameras, and that would have given a little bit more light um onto them if you wanted. If you can somehow, sometimes if sometimes they create a V and you kind of shoot between the V, but if you can somehow get that foam core um between you and your subject metal, even if it's off to the side a little bit, it would reflect a little bit of light into there. And then some of that probably would have been just enough to fill in the light. We're talking about the little camera that's below the flash, that brownie.
Um yeah.
Oh, there's a detail kind of loss there, and if you had a little reflector there, that would have just brought that up enough to to be able to see that detail there.
Cool. Thank you.
Sorry, Talon.
Thanks.
So this is a excellent example of a still life called Spring Beauty. Uh this is a very nicely exposed image, although one of the things to consider is that on a cloudy day, uh it gives you this nice even light, but it might cause white flowers to lose some detail. Um not quite sure if that was the case here, but it seems on that edge. Uh one of the things that's nice about is the arrangement, the different colors that keeps the eye moving around the subject. Uh from a composition point of view, great separation of the subject and the background. Uh that the background's far enough away, that creates that nice blur. Uh having the flowers at the base certainly helps to soften the edge of the vase. And technically, this is minor, but you know, the table seems a little bit unlevelled, but this is more likely due to it's an old table. Um or that it wasn't, you know, the photographer wasn't dead center with the with the subject, so there's a little bit of a angle there. Um one of the improvements we thought was possibly making the background darker with something like a radial filter or a vignette that would have helped to make the subject pop a bit more. So this was by Aneta. Might not be a surprise. Any comments, Aneta?
Nope, you did fine.
All right. And we're we're opening, if anybody, um and I said this before, any of the judges that were there on on Tuesday, if you if you feel like we missed anything, then please go ahead and and comment.
I'll just, I'll add to it, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um I just, I actually really like how the background kind of seems to extend the pot of flowers. So the the left of the flower has that nice red in it, and then I see that matched in the tree on the right behind. And then the nice green on the right of the actual arrangement kind of goes to the same and counterbalances the left corner. When I kind of just kind of look at depth of field and blend them together, it's almost like the background is a bit of a continuation of the pot of flowers. I I really like that effect. So um I don't know if that was done intentionally, but it it looks really nice.
No, it wasn't actually. I just like to fill in the sky because I don't like blown out skies, so but.
How about subliminally to yourself? Do you think that's possible where you just realized, gee, because you could have turned that that pot of flowers in any direction, right?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I'm sure she arranged it and she knew that this was the front of the
And it 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 could be subconscious, because lots of times when I make these kinds of arrangements, I pick a whole bunch of flowers and I just make it. And it it's, there's not a lot of thought to it for me, because it's just, I put it together because I know what I'm going for and I know the, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
And I think the image would look much better if it had a darker background. I think the background is busy and the pot of flowers just melts into the background. I think a pot of flowers looks very nice, and it would, as I think it was mentioned by somebody else earlier, make it pop if it had a black background.
Oh, no, not black. I love that. We did, we did have a comment. Um we had a lot of discussion actually about backgrounds in these images, because um this image, we did have somebody who suggested it was a little bit busy and it would be nicer at a smaller x-axis or farther back. But then we did have people who said that they love the detail that's in the background. Um so it's it's very, very photographer
Objective.
Objective, yeah, for sure. Um we had, we had discussions about black backgrounds and how it's always nice to have a little bit of detail in the background, because images that are just against something black just feel like they're floating there, you know? Um this adds a story to it and 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 the colors are, yeah, this background's beautiful.
Yeah, and some of the flowers in the arrangement come from that tree behind it, so.
So this is another excellent example of a still life. Uh one of the things we liked about it with the lighting was the contrast of the bright on the left with the dark on the right that gives the photo a really nice texture. And having the flowers in the pool of light keeps the attention on the subject. Uh having the flowers flow into the center and pointing at their shadow, we thought was really great. Uh technically, the depth of field is great with the flowers being sharp and the background being nice and soft. One of the improvements we thought could be made is the um is a little less negative space on the right to may have helped. Other than that, we thought it was quite a, yeah, we really enjoyed this photo. And this was, sorry, this was Judy Gunblock. Judy, do you have any comments or does anyone else?
I'd comment, I quite like the image. I like your uh your comment about a bit too much native space on the right. I think it might be a nice vertical. Um but I love her choice of props, the chair, the bucket, the the background, it works really well. And the flowers are just stunning in there.
Yeah, we had someone comment that they thought it would be um nice as a vertical also, um that Judy, you might want to comment, because you said that you, once you saw the uh shadow on the dark spot, you really liked that, and and that attracted me to the image too, and that's why she didn't crop it there, but um some people felt that um it would be okay without those shadows too, and you created an image that was more vertical and um just the shadows that are in the chair and on the, you know, all that is is enough for the image.
Uh yeah, I um I really fell in love with that shadow, so that's why I chose this one for the club. Like, I did take some verticals of this shot and um but I chose this one to present because I really like the shadow. After the meeting uh the other night, I did play around with it a bit and take a bit off the side to um, you know, just cropped it down a little bit. Um which I did think improved it. But um yeah, that's why I chose this one.
I also would see now that uh, excuse me, Laura Lee, that um depending on what you've got your monitor set at for brightness makes a huge difference as to how that uh negative space looks. If you're, if you've got your your brightness on your monitor right up full blast, it's it's quite less negative. And if you've got it down less than half, which I normally have mine down way below half in order to uh match up for printing, uh it looks like it looks very dark. So uh if it does look a little odd to you or doesn't, then play with your play with your brightness control a little on your monitor and just see what the difference does uh with that.
Because Judy said that that on the right-hand side is actually a backdrop, so it's kind of modeled, right? More like what it looks like in the light area. So you can see, I can see a little bit of modeling in there in the dark and uh just adding a little bit of detail in there makes a difference, and it's not, it's not so black there.
Yeah, I can open it up, so there's absolute, it's absolutely bright on the right-hand side. You can see all the detail in the in the backdrop.
So probably the biggest comment we had about this was just, wow, uh this person is just should maybe do an Ed segment. There, there's just a lot that could be learned from from this. Uh there's excellent lighting, especially from the top. We really like that. Uh the blues or purples, I guess it depends on how you look at it, are spot on. Uh excellent example of complementary colors here with the base matching the flowers. Composition's really great, has this nice symmetrical feel, great example of a centered composition, excellent use of negative space, we thought. Uh technically, the bits of brown in the back give the photo a nice sense of depth. We had some discussion about if more depth of field would have helped. Uh most light, the depth of field as the front three flowers are sharp, and this gives a depth to the photo, but some thought might be nice to have more depth of field to bring those in a little sharper. The only improvement we thought could be made to this was misting on the flowers, so they had that, they had dewdrops or that just would have helped to bring it up another level, but like I said, we really enjoyed this photo. And this was by Donna. Donna, do you have some comments?
Uh sure, thank you, everyone. Um these were um sitting under my uh skylight in the kitchen. Those are my cupboards in the background there, so if it looks like it's floating, that's that's what it's from. Um I never thought to miss them and give them a little bit more texture that way, but yeah, that's um the light coming through the skylight was what what did it and I I I probably shot some other ones at different uh apertures, so there might be others. I just liked the way the colors came out in this one.
Yeah.
I have a question in in relation to this image and Ian's last comment. I'm seeing on my monitor a black background. I'm seeing on my monitor a black background with perhaps a touch of brown in the top left, just a touch. So is that what people are seeing? Are they seeing more or less a black background on this image?
That's what I'm seeing.
I can see some, some brown.
Yeah, see touch of brown at the top. But yeah, and I should say that about the black, sometimes it's floating. But I think you like, sometimes it's just a fine art image. And that's what this is with the black background. And I think, I think the black background really suits this image for sure.
Thank you.
So general comment on this, it's a fun photo. They either makes you thirsty or remembers a night of hard partying. The, the lighting's handled well as there's no hotspots. The compositionally, the placement of the bottle, the lemon, the salt is great. Tells this nice story from left to right. The reflections of the table really add to the image. Perhaps moving some of the items to a different plane. So they're not all in the same in a line, like putting the shot glass in front of the bottle will help to add some more depth to the image. Technically, there is, there are some composite elements that you can see where the blacks don't match. As far as improvements, one is to take the labels off the lemons because they distract. The knife feels like it's at an awkward angle, maybe having a hand holding it would help the ground a little more. And maybe having a more textured background. This is one of the ones where we had that discussion about, you know, is a pure black background or something a little more textured. The one question we had is, we weren't sure what the white spots by the lemon were. If that was intended to be salt or lemon juice. That was one of the questions we had for the photographer. Who is Chris Oats? Chris, do you have any comments?
Uh, this is one of those cases where my, my monitor was set too dark. And I didn't see, I think I composited the, the spray from the lemons, but I couldn't see, I just thought it really composited really easily. And then it was afterwards, right after I sent it, I turned my brightness up and noticed that it didn't match completely. As far as the, the shot glass, I, I think you're right that it should be at a different spot.
Ray, a shot that you took from before or taken from somewhere else?
It was, I, I took everything away and just hit the lemon juice with a spoon.
Okay.
And it was the same location, but I don't know why it looks different. Same exposure.
Very cool.
So this one was called Dead Daffodils. So we liked how it had this great surrealistic feel to it. It has a great use of black and white here. The exposure is exceptional in keeping the whites white without blowing them out. Composition wise, this is a great example of not having to show the whole subject. And good use of negative space. There's some nice lines that are going up and down. And then the curvature of the stem keeps the eye coming back to that base. Technically, the exposure in the F stop give a nice texture to the background without it being too distracting. The only real question we had about this is whether or not it was an infrared photo. And this was done by Gord.
What's infrared? So that. They said this had a little bit of an LED light straight overhead and then some skylight up to the left as well. And that, that was it. And I called it dead daffys, but I have no idea if these are daffodils or not.
Don't look like them to me.
No, they're actually tulips.
They're flowers.
Tulips.
I think we all really love the range of blacks to whites and pretty much every shade of gray in between that you, you got in this image.
Thanks. It was a little challenging getting the right exposure.
I, I think we agree you did it well. So this one, we, we thought was actually, was one of the best. It gives a real feeling of the classic still life photo. We felt there was exceptional lighting of the teapot with lots of detail in the reflections. And at the top of the blanket, the darkness around the teapot really helps it to stand out. This is another great example of a center weighted image or composition. The only improvement we had, there was, we had a fair discussion about the background as it, with it being not quite centered on the teapot. Although some felt that this actually helped the image, others felt that centering might have helped as well. And this one was Lauralie.
Yeah, I don't know much to say. I think I set it up the same way that Dana did for hers where I had a backdrop and there was a window behind the backdrop. And so the light was shining from around, the natural lighting was shining from around the backdrop and onto the, until the pot. So it was just a matter of moving the, the pot and the stand closer or farther to try to get most of it being rimlet instead of too much of the light flowing in front. And I think as the window was quite large, I had a little bit of trouble, had to block some light from, from it too.
So general comment about this, we thought this was a fun still life of the, the a fun still life of the photographer showing all of the instruments that they can play. We thought lighting was very well done. It snaps the eye right to that center. Maybe the front is too bright. We, the composition wise, we felt that this photo was quite on the busy side. Maybe only focusing on just the guitars with sheet music in front was a suggestion. Another suggestion was having an odd number of elements. Technically, great depth of field that keeps everything sharp. And that was kind of all the comments we had on this one. Yeah, and I, I, I think I, looking at this photo again, when I saw it before, I thought the clarinet was blending into the background, but maybe it was a light dark thing like Ian was talking about earlier. Oh, I'm sorry. This is Ian's photo, Ian Thompson. Anything else you want to say, Ian, or anyone else?
I did have the kitchen sink ready to put in there if I didn't eat it another odd number. So. That was, that was the key. And I, I do agree, it does look terribly busy. And I'm not terribly thrilled with the brightness of the light and the, the effect of it. It kind of looks, it screams photograph to me rather than still life. That's kind of how I'm looking at it now.
And that is the final one for tonight.
Nice images.
Maybe when Ian said he had a black and white of that one too, that he's considering putting in, I'd love to see it when you're doing your edit segment, maybe. You can call it up, maybe. Anyway, so thank you, everybody who did do the theme. It, it was, it was fun to do. I was hoping to do a few more rooms to have a choice for, but that one I did. And then, and I didn't have time to do anymore. But yeah, thank you, everybody. And thank you, everybody for coming, that came for the judging and put all the effort into the judging that we did on Tuesday because we, I think we came up with some really great critiques. Any comments or questions from anybody else, for anybody, any of the photographers? If not, we will move on. And if Ian is, if you're ready, well, Ian is doing a little Lightroom segment. We're going to try to have these segments every meeting. Did you show a couple of little things in Lightroom of how you can just improve your image really, really quickly? So you can go ahead.
Okay, we'll give it a whirl.
I think Ian said it's all right if you ask questions on the go while he's doing it.
I've got to, I've got to find my screen here. This is my desktop, so. Is that showing up?
Yep.
Okay, I never, I haven't actually ever used Lightroom at all. I use Camera Raw, which is virtually identical and, and have moved through that through like, like through Photoshop. So I would start with Bridge, which allows me to go through my photos and find one that I'm looking to deal with. So this starts off in Bridge, tells me what I'm at. And so I choose a photograph in Bridge, hit Command R, and that takes me through to the Camera Raw thing. And so I usually just start at the top, have a look at the histogram, see what's going on. I, I check with most things as I go along, usually hit the black and white button just to kind of see what black and white looks like, even if I don't intend to do it in black and white. It gives me an idea a lot of times on what to look for to make black and white as well. So just keeping a black and white look of coming back and forth as I go along, I, I check to see what that looks like and, and go from there. First of all, usually I deal with any kind of cropping that I might want. This one where the horizon is off just a little bit, I try to get the horizon dead level first before we carry on any further. And this allows me to do that. I can then also work on my composition a bit here with the rule of thirds and deciding how things want to be laid out. This one happens to put the yellow cottage just on the third line, top to bottom, which is fine. I would also consider depending on the scene, this one probably doesn't require it. I might actually pull the top down to make that one third, two thirds, sky and ground work. But in this case, I didn't really think it required that. So I just leave it at the top and hit the enter button and I'm into the, to the, the first part of it. I move on then down to the color rendition. And oftentimes, because it's a landscape and it's outdoors, I tend to use Adobe Landscape, which tends to bring out a few of the blues and greens and things that you don't normally see in just the regular Camera Raw. And have a look at that. And then I go to the basic panel. Oftentimes, then I also look to see what the temperature's at as far as the overall rendition goes. And oftentimes run through this group of color, of white balances. Check with Auto. Oftentimes, Auto does pretty much what I want. Off, maybe just a little bit too yellow. So I'll bring the yellow back a little bit down closer to 6,000. And that purely, all of these adjustments are purely to the eye. There's absolutely nothing with the numbers or anything else that, that makes anything right or wrong. It's just what looks good to you at the time. And six months from now, I might do it entirely differently than I have this time. So it's purely, purely what you think of as you're, as you're doing it and what your day's been like, so to speak. I work my way down through the basic panel, hardly ever touch exposure or contrast. Highlights always, but first, before I deal with that, I have another look back at the histogram here. And I want to be able to push the whites all the way to the right edge. So I get as white a whites as I can get right off the bat. Same thing with the blacks. If I'm blocked up in the back here on the blacks, I'll move the blacks up. So I'm not blocked up anywhere and just get them. So they're inside the histogram. Makes a perfect balance for the, the rendition. And then I'll always normally for landscapes, pull back on the highlights a little. Brings all the definition out of the clouds and the sky. Much better if you pull the highlights back. Sometimes it makes a difference depending on, on the day, but you'll see as you push the highlights up, the sky, the sky loses its contrast. So I always pull the highlights back just a little bit to start with. And then depending on what I've got for shadows in, in this particular foreground, I might open up the shadows a little bit just to see if there's some definition that I want to pick out there. Check the whites again to see if it's done anything and it hasn't. So I just always refer back to those blacks and whites so that I'm getting the full breadth of the entire spectrum all the time. A little bit of work on texture often helps out. And just so that you start to see things, just start to crisp up a little bit. And then you don't have to go any far. You can go a lot further and you know you've gone too far. There's nothing with these that makes anything work, but you just play with them until you find the night, the sweet spot that you like at the time and you carry on. Same thing with, with the clarity, which is the overall, the amount of, of, of the mids being brought up or down. So this one looks pretty good about there and dehaze once in a while. If you've got really a, a long perspective and you know you've got some haze in the background, dehazing kind of helps a little bit. It'll crisp up just the horizon a bit. And the, the stuff that's furthest away from the camera, never hurts to try it and see what it does. Same thing with vibrance. When you use the texture and the clarity and the dehaze, not necessarily always dehaze, but it tends to lose a little of its vibrance. So I always push a little bit on the vibrance just to bring up a little bit of color, not much. And that's about as far as I go with the basic panel. Next one I dropped down to is the detail panel. And then we want to move in to as close to 100% as we can get. And you'll see that it's up to 100. That takes me to 100%. And I find a place where I'm, I'm thinking that whatever detail I want to be able to see is, as the sharpest in the photograph is, is where this is at. And then I run the sharpening up to somewhere around 100, just to see how it breaks up. And that's too far. So you'd want to pull it back a little bit to about there. This is what I'm looking at is the detail in these pampas grass as, as being the best. This part back here where we see it, it's really crisped up the grass or the, the sand and the water and everything. I don't worry about because I mask that out. And if you hit your option key on a Mac, same thing I gather on a PC and then hit the mask button, you can find out exactly what you're sharpening the most. And anything that's white is what's being sharpened. Anything that's black is not being sharpened. So I'll mask it out to as far as I can possibly go to get rid of any sharpening in places that I don't want it. And so once you let go, then all of a sudden you've lost all that bad sharpening that you didn't need because it's all masked out. Then I can move back to the full screen and I'm pretty, pretty happy with that. Normally at full screen, I might also pull in and have a look at the sky. And if that bit of sharpening has been a little too aggressive, you can throw a little noise reduction into the sky to just soften up some of the crackle in the sky. Usually under 20 as far as numbers go and the noise reduction is adequate. Usually under 20, as far as numbers go, and the noise reduction is adequate. Depends on your camera and your lens and your sensor. So that's pretty much where I go with that. Next one down, I'm moving along, just go down the list. Color mixer. This is the one that kind of makes it work or not work depending on what you've done. I worked, I start with luminance and I know this sand and the grass and everything are into the yellows and oranges. And so I'll play with the oranges a little bit. I can brighten up the sand to just to kind of give that a bit of a look. Same thing with the yellows. To bring the grasses out, you'll find that grasses is, we expect it to be a green, but it's 90% yellow. So depending on how you handle the yellows really makes what the grass looks like stand out. You'll notice that the greens, if I play with the greens, it really doesn't do much to the grass in comparison to the yellow. So we'll push that up a little bit, just so that we see some of this area down here in the greens kind of separate a little bit from here. That helps a little bit. So we get a little bit of separation on those colors and greens. The aquas are now going to show up probably mostly in the water. Not a lot, but a little, you can see just a little bit of light come back onto the water in here with that aqua. So I'll push that up a little bit. Now with the blues, I'm not really thrilled with this color of cyan in the sky. So I might pull that back a little bit just to darken up the sky. And when we go then through to the saturation slider, I might even desaturate that blue a little bit to get get that kind of a blue look out of it. One of those things that could have been, could have been cropped out initially and come down below that blue spot. But kind of gives you a little detail up here to match up and juxtapose the the detail down here. And so that's the reason for leaving this blue area up here. And then you can always play just to check, see where the you don't expect to see purples in the sky. But guess what? There are some. So depending on where you want and what kind of detail you can pull out of the sky, then with the purples, you'll notice that once you pull the purples back, you get far better detail in the sky. Same thing with the magentas. There's a little bit of agenda in the sky as well. So if depending on where you want to be with that, you can pull even more detail out of the sky again. Then we go over to saturation. And here again, the blue is what I want to desaturate a little bit to pull that blue back just so it's not quite so dark, brighter blue. And you could play a little bit with the oranges and the browns, but I bring that back just a little bit from where it was. And the yellows, you can, you can give them a little saturation, kind of separates out the foreground a little bit better again. And the aquas for sure will want to saturate those up to bring up the aqua in the in the in the ocean. And that's maybe a little more than it needs. So come back just a bit from there. And the same thing with the purples and the magentas again in the sky, you'll notice there's a little bit of change. So we want to desaturate those out of the sky. So we don't have purples and magentas in the sky either. And always keeping an eye on the histogram here to make sure you're not losing it at either end. The next step down the list is the color grading. This purely in my estimation works for either brightening the midtones, shadows, or the highlights. And I'll always just work on them a little bit just to see where they're going. I can push them all the way to the to the right or the left, just to see where fits. But this looks like it, if we push it up to about the light, the lightness of around 20 isn't bad. Maybe closer to 30. And then for the shadows, we can maybe open them up a little bit, but I don't, no, we're going to close them down a bit. So shadows going back to about minus five. And then the highlights, we'll see what's going to work with the highlights the best. And really not a lot of highlight, probably plus five would be enough there. Then you can blend those a little bit depending on what looks best to you. This isn't changing much. You can watch your, watch your histogram and you'll see what it's actually doing. And that's really not doing anything as far as the balance goes. The balance then adding to it brings the midtones up just a bit in the overall look. And we're just about to the end. So I normally go back down to the effects and I'm kind of in favor of, and I call it giving your photograph a hug and putting a little vignette in just to bring up the edges and and kind of focus your eye in the picture. Gives you a little better detail lots of times in the skies in these instances and puts that feeling back into it. Once I've gotten that far, I may end up then going back to the basic panel just to check where the whites are, make sure the whites are as high as they should be in order to get the full value of them. And make sure the blacks haven't gone somewhere, which they have. So we'll want to move the blacks over again and get them from blocking up. And then we just check to see what we had before. And if you come down to this little key on the bottom here or hit the Q key on your on your keypad, then you can see what before and after looked like. And it rotates through from what we had to start with to what we ended up with, which in this case is I I consider somewhat better than what we started out with. And you can rotate through these just to see what you've done as far as just by hitting the Q key. And that's it. Any questions?
Just a comment, Ian, I found that very helpful, particularly the before and after. Very good. Thank you.
And I'm not even too sure how long that took. So that's, that's usually once you get, once you get happy with it, you can breeze through these things really quickly. So I'll turn it back to Laura Lee.
We see your black and white images of guitars.
Oh, maybe. Hang on. I'll just check and see if I can find it quickly.
Yes, thank you for that demonstration. That that was funny how you lose sight of what the original was and you get the end and then see the difference.
Right.
Or an after this. That was really amazing.
Let's see where we at here. Themes pictures.
You had it there.
Yeah. That's the one I had in black and white.
I like the black and white much better.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Obviously, my joke, my choo, my choosing is poor.
Because even look on the face of that Gretsch, it just has all kinds of yeah, design and texture and variations. And I didn't see that in the in the color one. Would you put the color one up again?
Sure. I think this is the call. Oh, that's not it. Hang on. Well, this is kind of it, but it's not it. But you, you do see it, but I don't have the one, the one that I I submitted isn't on this this film script. This is with a different lens. So I used three or four different lenses. So these are all the different venditions that I made of that particular photograph. So.
The black and white one is the winner.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll take better care of my choices next time.
Actually, that's really important. I find a big problem with that choosing which is the right image to submit. I mean, I don't glove, but to to newspapers. Choice of image is important.
Part of that is probably because we have an emotional attachment to our image, right? And sometimes we have to remove our, not see it from the other person's point of view.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah, oftentimes you ask for help and they tell you which one they think they like the best. And you think, oh, geez, I don't know if I'd like that or not. You say, okay, and you shouldn't have.
Yeah.
So so on that note, I have a quick story. We were in Calgary at SunDog printers and we're, we had just chosen eight images to print and like on the big industrial printer. And the lady there was looking over some of the slides that I hadn't chosen for the cards. And she just said, excuse me, but have you ever thought about this image? And I mean, it was one of my selections, but it wasn't one that I was going to get printed in this in that run. And you know, we we decided to go with it when you really looked at it. And it was actually, it was the Carmen Gay elevators. And I sold 20,000 of those cards. And I wasn't originally even going to put it into the actual printing. So sometimes really it's other people who can see what you can't, I think. And Laura Lee, you might have hit on it that we have a lot of attachment to the different images that we take that might then kind of influence us to to maybe not see the the best of what we have.
Yeah. Sometimes it's like you, you remember being out there and you might have had trouble or it might have been cold or it might have been windy and and all this stuff. And then you kind of put that into the image or into when you look at the image. So it's hard for you to see the good things in the image because of all that that was happening.
That's very true. Frequently your your backstory and what you're thinking of at the time and what happens around the image really clouds it.
There's a business.
I asked my wife to to pick the theme image for me.
There's a bit, there's a business that somebody could get into is photo selections.
Yeah.
No kidding.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Ian. That was, I think, really helpful to a lot of people. And like you said, Camera Raw is basically the same as Lightroom. So anybody who has questions about that, just you should be able to find the same things in Lightroom. So we're going to move on to Donna, which I almost forgot about, or I did forget about, but she reminded me. So we're going to try here. Donna is doing a little segment on panning because she had such a beautiful image last time with the bike. You already done it?
I think so, yeah.
Go ahead.
So hit share screen.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not seeing it.
We see, we see your mountain or whatever shoreline or whatever.
That's my screen.
Do you? Now, it might not come. Yeah, it did come up for us.
It's there?
Oops, it was.
Let me go back. Is that it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So yes, panning is the theme for July, I believe. And it's part of the long exposure. And so I just, I've just put together a couple of the pictures that I have. And a few of the words that I found that try and explain, explain some of it. So it's just a photographic technique that combines a slow shutter speed with camera motion to create a sense of speed around a moving object. And so in concept, panning is easy. You set your shutter speed to freeze motion or blur it. Move with your camera with the action and snap the shutter. How you handle the details of the concept will determine the success of your images. They're an infinite array of subjects around us and no two pictures will ever be the same. And just a little note on some of the essentials. The speed, you use slow shutter speeds to depict motion. And it's determined by how fast your subject is moving and how much speed or motion you want to have up here. Experimentation and experience will have a lot to do with your shutter speeds choices. And yeah, I I I think that's, that's a big thing. You just start playing with it and finding out what works. The sharpness, something, almost anything in the photo should be sharp. Blur means motion, but all blur might be interpreted as a mistake and as annoying. If you get two or three elements sharp, chances are you have a keeper. The focus, whatever camera focus mode or method you are comfortable with will work. Steadiness, a tripod is a good choice if there's a predictable path for your subject. Handheld is the way to go for random or unpredictable movement. I'm not sure I've ever used a tripod in any of my pictures that I've taken, but I've heard people do try that. And the distance, subjects that are farther away will appear to be moving more slowly than up close, so easier to pan. The closer, the greater visual, visual sensation of speed. A busy background doesn't matter as it will all be in motion. And practice and persevere. Start with something slow and manageable. And don't be surprised if you take 20 or 30, in my case, hundreds of pictures to get a to get a satisfying result. It can be very difficult to achieve, but don't give up. So I've just given a couple of examples now of some of the stuff I've done. Horses, go figure. And so you can see that these are probably at about a 30th of a second. And the aperture is probably around F18 or so because they're all during the day. And you can see there's different, different things in a focus, a hoof or a mane or something like that. But the the background is all blurred and you can see there's motion. In this next picture, it was a slower, faster shutter speed and I just moved the camera, but I wanted to get the detail in the main and still some more in the horse. And then this one, I think this was about one 30th of a second and probably F18, F20, somewhere in there. And some of you might have seen this other one. I think I showed it once before. And again, just getting the the speed, showing the speed and the beach. And but the the clarity and the whatever those things are. And then so just to show that there are all sorts of different subjects and you can do this anywhere. This is just over at Henderson. Lots of geese there. Lots of seagulls. And another seagull. And then this is the picture of my neighbor Bob. And so, yeah, I saw him there and I said, hey, Bob, do you want to just ride by a few times? And it can take quite a few pictures to to get a good one. And they'll usually tell you when they're ready to be done. So then the other, another part of panning is it's called intentional camera movement. It's an abstract style of shooting that has no rules and it all comes down to moving your camera over a long exposure. And here I've just shown, I think Ian McGilvery touched on this in his presentation last, last meeting. And so this is the before image and then the one after, and I've just panned it. And a lot of it depends on how fast you're moving your camera and what your shutter speed is. But I just really like the colors. And that's, it's kind of a boring picture on its own. But if you move it and blend the colors, it 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 gives you a nice abstract. So that one is going horizontally. And this one, again, the colors are are really cool. And I just did this one vertically. And where you hit your shutter as you're moving up or down is going to depend on what kind of a picture you get as well. This next one is a three pictures that I took, different exposures and of course, hitting your shutter at a different, at a different time. And then I just combined all three of them to get to get this picture. And then these ones, I just took the same picture and put them on top of another picture if you'd rather just do it in your computer. And it's just fun. You can just play around and get get different results with different things. And then I saw this quote from Mark Twain that you can't depend on your eyes when your imagination is out of focus. So if anybody has any questions, please. That's about all I can say about panning. Just that it, I've had yeah, those poor horses, as soon as they saw me with yeah, those poor horses, as soon as they saw me with the camera, they'd start running because they just, they, they knew I was going to be out there for a while. It takes, it, it takes lots of practice to get it right.
And are you, are you checking your focus on your camera when you're out there? Are you just taking a whole bunch and then you get home to see what you got?
I try to check my focus and you start panning before you, you try and figure out where, where you want to have your focus and start moving your camera before you click the shutter, move it along with what your subject is.
Right.
And that usually helps.
Yep. Very cool. So you said it as a project for yourself to, to learn how to do it?
I've been doing this for a long time, yeah. But like it's, it's not, I certainly haven't perfected it. It's just, it's a lot of fun.
I just have one tip for when you're panning.
Yeah.
When you're panning, you can shoot in burst mode. So it ups your percentage of, you know, getting your object frozen in time.
Right.
If you shoot in, in burst mode, say five or 10 frames, you know, you might get one of those frames that has your subject well focused.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, thank you, Donna. I think those are really, of course, I like the horse images, but we all really loved your, your neighbor shot.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are moving on to Gord, if you're ready. Are you still there?
I think so.
Yeah, there you are. So Gord is, he's doing a sort of being there segment. It was a COVID project and I think he called it like a healthbound safari. So he'll let us know a little bit more.
Okay, here I am. In July of 2010, like 10 years prior, we had traveled to South Africa and gone on a real live African safari. And it was a trip of the lifetime. And then I got all kind of morose and sad because I couldn't go anywhere last summer in July of 2020. But then I, you know, I mean, pandemics ruined our lives, right? Anyhow, I thought, well, okay, maybe I can do a little repeat of the safari thing at home. And so I decided to take pictures of all the little animal figurines and, and images that we have scattered around the house. But I had a rule. Just like on a real safari, you can't move the animals. They won't, you know, move over six feet for you if you want a better composition. So the only thing I could do was find, move myself around and look for a better light.
We can't hear you, Gord. Yeah, if you're still talking, Gord, we lost you. And if there's supposed to be music, then I think you forgot to click on the share, share music. Yeah, it's not there yet, right? You might need to get out of the screen sharing and, and start again. Okay. So did you click on this share music again? Remember? We've lost your mic, Gord. There you go.
Sorry, I, I did not do that. I'm sorry. I don't know where that is.
On, when you, when he clicks, we went over the, when you click on a screen share, then on this, on the screen where it has all the desktops that you need to choose from, on the bottom left-hand corner, it says, share computer audio, something like that.
I'll give it a try. Okay, what happened here?
Not playing?
My apologies. What have I not done here?
Is the show not playing? Is that what you're saying?
It did not play, no.
So when you click on it, it doesn't play?
I will, I will give it a try again here.
That was awesome. And I, I see, I hope you're seeing some of the comments here because Trevor said that was, that was wonderful.
Well, thanks very much. I had fun doing it.
Very nice, Gord.
How, over how many months were you shooting, you know? Or did you do this within a week or something?
I thought I would do it in a couple of days. But you start walking around your house and you think you, you've seen everything. And then three days later, you look across the room and there's another little creature or picture or whatever that you missed. And you know, I did that for over a month.
Yeah. Well, I love how you showed us, it's, it's almost like a study in, in what we were talking about in the theme about shooting different angles, different lighting, different lenses. That was, that was really great, seeing the same, same animal from, from different points of view. And the scene that you created with it without moving the animal was really cool.
Yeah, I figured that was, I mean, when you're out in the wild, you can't ask the elephant to move over six feet, right? So you, you have to move.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Gord? Okay, you guys are all a quiet bunch today. So I think we're going back to John. John's prepared. It did, he wanted to learn, I think, a little bit more about macro photography. So he set himself a project for macro photography and he's got a presentation for us.
Yeah, so I have to admit, part of what I did here, I actually did this presentation more for me personally than, and then I thought, oh, maybe the photo club be interested. I did this kind of a summary of what I did. Is that coming through?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I called this Macro March Madness. So this is lessons from a month of macro photography. And so what I'm going to talk about is I'll talk, this is sort of a combination, ed segment, been there. So it's educational in that I'm going to talk about what macro photography is and how you can do it. It's been there in that I'm describing a journey that I took over a month. And it's also critique because I'm going to go through some of my photos that I took and I'm going to talk about what I think are some of the best ones, where are the worst ones, where are the lessons I learned from doing it? I'll tell a few stories about, sort of show you a photo and then tell you kind of the behind the scenes, how that photo came to be. And then just a few final thoughts on some other lessons, miscellaneous lessons that I've learned. Give me a moment and I will turn on my camera, which I just realized is off.
There you walk.
Okay. So let's talk about what macro photography is. You can think of it as extreme close-up photography. So it's producing photos of small items that have been larger than life. So here's an example of one I took. These are salt crystals. And if you think about how small a salt, this is sea salt. Think about how small those are. This gives you an idea of what we're talking about. And also one of the challenges of this type of photography is that shallow depth of field. You can see, so I mean, you can just see how almost razor sharp that is. Typically, we're dealing with ratios of one to one or even greater, like a 10 to one magnification. Once you get beyond 10 to one, it's considered, was a photo micro photography. So now you're starting to look more like through a microscope. So what kind of equipment might you need for this? Many cameras have a macro mode. So of course, in order to take macro photographies, you need the camera. But you also need a lens and you need a lens that you can get close enough to the subject. And I'm going to talk about different ways that you can do that. The first one that certainly a lot of people start with is ma, is the macro mode. This allows for that close-up shots. Now, how it actually does this, I tried to figure it out and find out and I actually tested some of my cameras. I really don't know what they're actually doing with it. And no, even when I did a, a search on the internet, no one seems to know exactly how it's done. It seems to be camera and manufacturer specific. But most likely what they're doing is they're putting limits on the apertures you can use and the shutter speed and the ISO that you're using. Of course, one of the common ways to do this is a specialty lens, what's called a macro lens. Again, allows you to get really close up to that subject, has a very short focal distance. And then allows for this life size or higher reproduction ratios. Usually we're looking at a range of 45 millimeters to 20, you know, 200 or more millimeters depending on the lens. Of course, they get quite expensive. But you, but there's other ways to do it with the lenses that you have. One is using extension tubes. And some extension tubes are a little more expensive because they'll allow for, so the extension tube sits between the lens and the camera. And just it creates that, extends the distance between the lens and the sensor. But generally you're going to lose autofocus with that unless you have more expensive extension tubes, which actually allow for the electrical connection. But I think most people do it with a manual. They lose the, they're willing to lose the autofocus. Another way to do it is magnifying filter that you can add to a normal lens. Typically there you're now, because you're adding more glass that the light has to go through, you can end up with a poor image quality. But again, depending on what you want to pay, you can, you can get better or worse filters. And then another way of doing is what's called a reversing ring. And you don't necessarily, so the reversing ring just allows, it'll screw into the filter thread of the lens and then that attaches to the camera. As you can see in this example, you don't necessarily, what some people do is actually just hold the lens right against the camera. Then you have to be really careful about laying light in, but that is another option. Some people, yeah, will, other people will also take a lens and a second lens on the camera kind of shoot through the second lens. That's a little trickier, I think, but it's another way you can do it. Again, if you use a reversing ring, you're going to automatically lose autofocus and aperture control. Again, uh, if you use a reversing ring, you're going to automatically lose autofocus and aperture control. Because now there's no connection between the lens and the camera. So some of the things you need to consider with macro photography is that depth of field is extremely narrow. And so the idea is to use the highest F stop as you can to make that depth of field as large as possible. And more than likely because of that, because you're, you have to use high F stops. So for example, one of the lenses I was using had an F stop of forty. Um, you're likely going to have to require highest, a higher ISO or a slower shutter speed or both. So tripods are your friend here. And the other thing you need to make sure, you have to be careful about is lighting. Because you're really close to the subject, it's very common that you're going to block out light on the subject. So you often need to use something like a flash and a diffuser. Or some people use a ring light, so a, a light that attaches to the end of the lens to light, to light it up. Um, yeah, as I said, that can be hard when the lens is really close, getting the lighting right. And lighting I found was definitely one of the trickier aspects with this. So I'm going to talk about sort of how and why I did this. So. I did it because at the end of February, I was actually doing some spring cleaning and I found two macro lenses in my cupboard. Um, over the last number of years, I've inherited a number of. Fair amount of camera equipment from my grandmother through my father. And I was just clean out cupboard and found these two lenses. Uh, the top one is a two hundred millimeter F four macro lens from the lens camera days. And I found an, an adapter that she had that fit. So it took a Canon lens and put on a Nikon body. And then she also had this, uh, Nikkor one hundred and five millimeter, uh, and F two point eight. And so those were the two lenses that I used. So I wanted to play with them. Um, another reason I did this was actually a comment that Maximo said in the presentation. I, I guess it was back when we were actually meeting at Casa. But he made this comment about one should always have one or more ongoing projects. And I thought, okay. I'm going to try that. I'm going to see if I can have an ongoing project for a month. Um, I had also recently read an article that talked about an artist. Who every morning he would just draw something, some little sketch, and it wasn't really about the sketch. It was just a way to keep creative. And I thought that was, you know, that was a really neat idea. So part of this is to do something every day. And the other thing is, is as a stretching activity. I've actually never been interested in macro photography. And so it was not something I really considered. And I thought, you know what? I'm going to try this for a month and if it doesn't work. So be it. If I don't really like it, then I don't, you know, I won't do it again, but at least I'm going to give it a good try. So how do they do it? Uh, I created a list of macro subjects. Uh, most of those were just going on the internet and finding people's lists. I also had some of my own, uh, and, and ones that I thought would be interesting. And I read lots, yeah, lots of webpages, watched a lot of videos just about general macro photography techniques. About how photograph specific subjects that I was interested in. And so I said two rules, kind of like what Gord was talking about. So my two rules for this were, there was no repeats. So. I didn't want to have, for example, so insects and flowers are really common macro. Photography subject, and I just didn't want a whole, didn't want to take a whole bunch of photos of flowers. And I couldn't find insects either at that time of year. So this was about exploration. So I was not allowed to repeat a subject type. And I had to post something every day, whether it was good or bad, whether I liked it or not. I, I was going to make, I was going to post it on Instagram and those were my two rules. Um, as far as technique, yeah, I used to, I think I used a tripod for every single one of these. So tripod's essential because of that small, I call, I said, small aperture here. Yeah, it's a large number. And I also used a two-second timer to remove any shake from pressing the shutter. Uh, that was mostly because I don't have a cable for my Nikon camera. Then what I would do is I would turn on the live focus on the camera. And I would zoom in, uh, like on, in the live view, I'd zoom in so that I could find my point of focus or where I wanted to focus. And then I'd manually focus. I'd just focus that as sharp as possible. And, you know, it was always a little blurry, but of course, because I was zoomed in like five to 10 times. I knew that it'd be come out fairly sharp. Okay, so I'm going to talk about some of the, my best and worst photos there. Um, so this was one towards the end. That I quite liked. Uh, so this, I, what I liked about it was the concept. This was, I, I'd seen a number of these photos online. Having to do with Pink Floyd's Dark Side of the Moon cover. And I thought this was a really neat idea. And so why, yeah, I really liked the concept. I really liked that I actually achieved this. I actually spent more time setting this up than taking the photo itself. Um, and then, but the things I don't like about it, one is that the light, that white, uh, thread is not straight. And that's really actually one of the things I've learned and I'll, I might come back to this with macro photography. Because you're zoomed in so far, the details, there's often details that you just don't see or don't realize things are out of alignment until you actually take the photo. The other thing here is you can see how the blue thread is doubled and a little bit on the red. But I, yeah, those were two things I didn't quite like about this. So, yeah, what did I learn from this? Preparation pays off. Like I said, I spent more time actually creating. Uh, like threading this all together. And one of the things I also learned is about paying attention to the background. The first few shots I took. Were really had this really bland background. Um, but I found as soon as I put a black, uh, construction paper behind it, it just, it just worked so much better. Um, this one, I, I'm considering one of my worst. Um, so what I like about it is actually seeing the surface tension pop through. So this is actually, most of the time when people do this. It's, uh, oil in water. This is, this is water in oil. So the blues are actually water droplets and then it's in an oil. Uh, in canola oil. And I kind of like the contrast of those faint blobs at the bottom with the sharp spheres. But I don't like, there's some of the coloring I don't like. I don't like the color of the oil. I don't like the bubbles in the oil. Um, and part of what I learned here is I actually, I, this was a video that I saw and the guy said, hey, this is really easy to do. It is not easy to do. I found it was not easy at all. Um, but the other thing I found is when I posted this, I, like I said, I consider this one of my worst. But it's actually the one that most people liked. They thought this was really cool. I think somebody said it looked like jewels. Um, so. You know, again, it's in the eye of the beholder. This one, uh, this was near the beginning and this was what I call my first execution photo, meaning. It was the first one where I thought about what I wanted to do and then execute the idea. Uh, I like the alternating pattern in this. I like the odd man out of the blue pencil. But again, coming back to that idea of. If you look, the tips aren't quite aligned and that was not at all obvious when I was setting this up. So what I learned, small imperfections get magnified. That was the biggest thing from that. Um, this, I again consider one of my. Worst ones. Uh, what I liked about it are the shapes and I like the sparkles of sort of the flares on it. But what I don't like is the harsh light. Uh, and you can see from the data, it was near the beginning and this actually convinced me that I needed a soft box. And so I actually built one out of cardboard box and some tissue paper and I actually used that for the rest of the month. But I actually didn't build it quite right. And so I had some struggles with that, but. That's, you can quickly build a small box that way. This one, um, I like, uh, I like the arrangement. Uh, this was one of those photos where I had something in mind. I started out with a different idea in mind, but then I worked the scene. And came up with this, which I liked a lot better. I like the colors. I like the reflection, uh, in the tin foil. That was sort of a last man idea. But what I don't like about is the angles aren't perfect. Uh, it was just like slightly off. So again, I learned how to work the scene. And the other thing I learned here is about cross processing. Um, there was actually a previous photo that I'd taken during the month where I happened to stumble upon the cross. Processing filter in Lightroom and liked the look. And I liked how it, uh, how it worked on this one too. And then this will be, I think, the last one. This one. Uh, this I actually used as a self-portrait in the, uh, scavenger hunt. There was a bit of time where those two overlapped. What I liked is the idea of seeing my eye really up close and. In the end, I liked the reflection. Of the light of my kitchen light, but originally when I saw this, I didn't like it and I spent, I spent a lot of time trying to get that out of there. And in the end, I, uh, one of the things I learned from this, oh, the other thing I did, I actually tried taking this photo. Before of my daughter's eye and I couldn't get it right. She was very patient about it. So this really taught me about how to fail. Go out and learn some more about how to do it and then try it again. And the other thing was this idea about embracing imperfection. Like I said, I've tried to get that light out of. That reflection of the kitchen light out of my eye. And in the end I went, you know what? I'm just going to lean into this. And I ended up calling that light in his eye. And as soon as I gave it that title, it really changed my perception of the image. So let me tell you just a few stories kind of behind the scenes. Um, so this one. The, this one is actually not at all the photo that I had planned. Uh, so you may have noticed that I've sometimes submitted kind of Lego photos. I kind of like that, doing those. And so I had this other idea that I was going to do. I had planned it out all month. I was really excited about it. And then I took a nap. And when I woke up, I had this other idea about a mountaineer submitting a scoop of ice cream. And so that's what this is, is vanilla ice cream. Maybe I was just craving vanilla ice cream. But that's what, that's all this was. And then what I did is I, for the blue sky, I started looking around my house. And I found a case, a video game case that where my kids had. And I put it behind it and I had to play with it a little bit so that the logo wasn't in it, but. A couple of things that I've kind of learned from this is. Don't be afraid to abandon something when inspiration strikes. Um, you know, even though I had this plan all month and I was excited about it, I went with something different. And also learned about how to use just unusual props around the house to make it look like something different, like the blue sky here. Uh, the other one I want to talk about is this one, which is again somewhat of a classic of macro photography. And I always wanted to do a water droplet photo, but. I thought the setup for this always seemed to be expensive. You had to buy, you know, equipment for timing and lighting. And I just didn't want to really invest in that. Uh, and then I came across a, a video talking about how you could do it with just some of the things that I already had. And so what I did is I, I put a. Ro, I have a big roasting pan. I filled it with water. Over top of, on the table. And then the, the kitchen light, I hung a Ziploc bag from it. And poked a hole in it. So that's where the water was dropping from. Then what I did is on the pan, I put a ruler, uh, because I knew where the water was dropping. I put a ruler down right next to where the water was dropping. And I took my camera and focused right on, I figured out where the exact. Number was. So I was watching the wire drop. I'd see where it fell on the ruler and then I would focus on that number on the ruler and then take the ruler away. Um, and then I knew exactly where my focal point was. Um, I had to play with that a little bit. One of the things I didn't have is I don't have an off-shoe flash. And so I spent a lot of time with this, trying to get the light to bounce right. Um, so that's probably where I would change it. But the funny, I guess the reason I'm telling the story is, is I spent probably Saturday afternoon doing this and my kids, one by one, happened to walk by. And they couldn't see the Ziploc bag behind the light. So they had no idea where the water was coming from. They were really confused until I, I showed them how I was doing this. So what I learned about this, yeah, is if I'm going to do this again, I'm going to get an off-shoe flash. Um, one of the things is make sure that you use a solid black container. The little bits of white that you see in the, in the water are actually from the, uh, roasting pan that I have. And the other thing to do is don't use, use a large container that is not perfectly circular. Because otherwise what happens is as the water falls, it creates these ripples that bounce off the edges, come back in and interfere. Now, sometimes that's what you want. But when you're shooting this manually, like when you're sitting there clicking the, the shutter, trying to get that timing is next to impossible. So I wouldn't recommend that. Um, just a few final thoughts. Uh, so give you sort of some statistic. I took about sixteen hundred photos. In order to come up with thirty-one photos that I actually posted. So if you think about that ratio. Uh, that's a lot. Um, and certainly the water droplet was the one that probably took the most photos with. Some other lessons, uh, the world is a lot dirtier than you think it is. Even though I would clean subjects, as soon as I, I would take these photos and then look at them on my screen and go, oh. There's a hair or there's a speck of dust or something. Um, so I was always finding that. One of the things I also learned about is how scary it is to kind of put your work out there. Uh, it's pretty scary to risk posting every day, the possibility of getting negative feedback or. Almost worse, no one says anything. And then. Another thing I learned is you really never know who's watching. Uh, towards the end of this, uh, probably about two thirds of the way through, I was actually getting kind of discouraged. Because, you know, the likes I was getting on Instagram were pretty much from my family and they kind of have to, right? So I kind of felt like I was just talking into a void. And then towards the end of it, someone who I didn't even know was following me or was paying attention. Posted this. And this really brightened my day and actually gave me that push to, to finish the project. When they said, you know, I really look forward to every day seeing one of these photos. Um, and so that really brightened my day. Um, one of the other things I learned, little efforts really do, do add up. Because I was doing this every single day. I actually found that towards the end of it, I could do these, I could do these photos very quickly. It would take me much less time. To shoot, set them up, shoot them and process them. Uh, and I knew, I had got a really good sense of when I had the shot I wanted. Uh, and then the final one, which may seem a little obvious. Is, um, leaving lens cleaning to professionals. Probably again, around about the two thirds mark, I was getting tired of cloning out all the dust from my lens, all the black spots. And I thought, hey, you know what? I can just open the lens and, you know, maybe blow in it or something and get that dust out. Found a YouTube video about how to disassemble the lens. Um, what happened is as soon as I opened it, I actually broke the cable that does the auto focusing. And even though I didn't open it very much, trying to get it back together turned out to be a lot harder than I expected. And then. Actually, nothing worked. And so I actually ended up sending, having to send it away to get it repaired and cleaned, which was an expense I had not budgeted for in this project. So that's, that's my story. Um, there's actually, I actually created a longer version of this. Although, I'll. I think Laura Lee is going to share this, uh, URL. Um, but yeah, there's actually a longer version of this with some more photos and, and more details. Uh, if you want to see all the photos that I did take, you can go on Instagram. At hashtag macro march madness. Um, I will warn you, I think there's one photo in there that some random person who was doing a macro diet posted with that tag. Um, that's not me. Um, but yeah, other than that, all the photos you've seen, um, unless I put a URL, I took all these photos. And that's it. I don't know if you have questions or.
Very, very entertaining, John. Really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Trevor.
Yeah, really good job.
John, I, I followed your March Madness all the way through, uh, your macro project and I quite enjoyed it. I don't post much on the internet, but I did give you likes.
That's right. You were one of the ones that wasn't my family.
Well, excellent job, John.
That, that was very interesting, John. Great information.
I'm glad you liked it.
Yeah, thanks. That, that was great. I enjoyed it too.
Yeah, I think you can give us all a lesson someday on how to create a presentation like that.
Oh. Yeah. Maybe.
Yeah. But yeah, that, that was, that was, it was really, really good. So yeah, we will, um, either. Post your long one. Can we post your?
Yeah, you can post.
The long one to the club, uh, YouTube channel is what I was. Post a long one to the club YouTube channel is what I was planning on doing. So we'll post as longer version to the YouTube channel.
Yeah, there's, there's the link again. I just threw the link in the chat.
Or you can go and look at it. Yeah. Chat there.
So I guess that ended up being a little longer than we had talked about, but yeah.
Time. We've got only one more thing left unless I've forgotten about somebody else, but Ralph gave me some images from his trip to Antelope Canyon. And I just put it together in a little bit of show. But Ralph, do you want to say anything about your trip? Might need to turn your mic back on. Yes, no.
Oh, we, we found Antelope Canyon more by coincidence over hearing a discussion by two tour guides, if it would be worthwhile to go there or not. But we were close enough to give it a shot and we were totally blown away by the scenery there. So here are a few shots from that, from that trip.
Okay, I'll see if I get this going and
Not showing it, Laura Lee.
I'm not seeing it.
I wonder if I have to.
Showing your files.
Your explorer.
Yeah, I think I have to stop to share again. Oops. Hang on a second. How come when everybody else goes to one thing, they can do it? You might.
You have to open the presentation first.
I know. I didn't put a menu at the beginning, so it's gonna start playing, unfortunately. So we might miss the very, very first part of it, but I'll try to do it quickly here. Start it.
Start it, pause it, then switch it.
Okay, yeah, I can. Hang on. Try that, see if we can get. Okay, this should work, I think. Can you hear, share sound? This one? Oh, shoot, Ralph. Can you see that? No?
Nope. Sort of a desktop.
Still there, huh? Sorry. I can't, I can't minimize it once it starts playing unless I stop it and that's not working. Sorry, Ralph, I should have.
Oh, no problem. I mean, I was totally stunned that you just put it together yet last night. Yeah, and yeah, it is already so far. So I'm sure we will get an opportunity to watch it at another point.
Yeah, okay, let me try one more time here. Might work. Yeah, I think I got it now. Now you can see it, right?
Yep.
There we go.
And play.
Laura Lee, thank, thank you very much for putting that together for me.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for your images and letting us show everybody.
Those were really stunning photographs.
Ralph, when were we there?
Oh, when was I there? I think 2014.
I was gonna say, it couldn't have been in the last year or so.
Okay, why do you say that?
Oh, just because the border's been closed, that's all.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. No, it was a little while ago.
No, that's really cool.
Yeah, and such a coincidence that you heard about it. We had, didn't have it on the plan for our trip. Yeah, so the two tour guides weren't sure. One was for it, then the other one said, ah, not worth seeing it. Yeah, so we were lucky that we could stop by there. Definitely.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It is worth seeing.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think it's on a lot of people's bucket list.
Yeah, it's a beautiful place.
Awesome. Thank you, Ralph.
I thank you for your help.
You're welcome. Cigarette, are you, are you here today? I don't think she is. I guess as far as I know, we don't have any definite dates planned for field trips, but there are some being planned for Waterton and I can't remember where else. But hopefully we'll get some in, in, we were talking the end of May, beginning of June. So there should be some coming up really soon. So awesome. If there's no other questions, I want to thank Chris and John and Ian and Donna and Gord and Ralph for helping us get together a great meeting.
Yeah, that was a great meeting.
Yeah, well done. Really good.
Laura Lee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Learned a lot today.
Yeah, we can just remember it all.
You recorded it.
Yeah, it'll be up, it'll be up soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for doing that.
That's really, that's really nice too, that you put those on the website. It's, it's nice to go back and look at stuff that's happened in the last year over the, over the course of time we've had. So that's, that's very good.
We'll see how everybody ages over the years.
I'll be getting the theme images and all of them up there so you can have a better look at the twirl images and whatnot. It's kind of nice to look at them at your own pace sometimes.
Definitely.
Awesome. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura Lee. Bye.